I call this meeting to order. North Adams City Council Regular Meeting, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Will the clerk please take the roll? Barbo. Blackmeyer.
Here.
Bona.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Obasahan.
Here.
Leskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
We have eight present, we have a quorum. Do we have, um, we don't have the minutes, so we'll move on. I'm sorry. Moment of silent remembrance and a pledge of allegiance. I would like to remember Shirley Davis, who had such an impact on our community this evening, and I will have a list at the next council meeting of all the others that we might have missed over the last few weeks. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. We don't have any. Hearing of visitors on agenda items. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on our agenda. Please go to the mic, give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm June Rio, and I live at thirty-six Holden Street, and I'm here to thank the Public Safety Committee for their hard work and how they welcomed me to their meeting, and they let me fully participate in the discussions, and it was really a great experience. I think also being at that meeting, it was possible to see the serious effort that was invested in trying to draft this legislation, and legislation is hard to draft, and I think every effort was made to make it clear and that could stand the test of time. I also appreciated the commitment of the committee to a fair and unbiased approach to the legislation, and they focused entirely on, you know, what was the right thing, and that was really great to see. And so it was a great experience, and I thank them for all the hard work that I could see went into this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jessica Sweeney, I live at one ninety Prospect Street, and I am also the owner-operator savvy have at fifty-three Main Street. I'm here to talk about the agenda item on the second-hand license. I hope that this council votes to remove this ordinance. This is something that would cost my business roughly twelve hundred dollars annually to be in compliance with, aside from many, many other things that I discussed at the subcommittee meeting, as why it really isn't, I think, a valuable ordinance for our community and really works against our local business community, which we have a lot of secondhand businesses. I had five other secondhand businesses reach out to me. They want to be anonymous, but they also are against this ordinance and hope to see you all remove it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Riley Howard, two twenty-five Eagle Street. I just want to add to that, I think the point's been made, and we had the subcommittee, I was at the General Government, I think, committee to talk about that, the second-hand licensing, but I do think it's very burdensome. It turns out in retrospect that the bookstore does not fall into that category, but I didn't know that, and neither did the city when they sent me the letter about it. So I think that overall, the idea of the secondhand licensing, tracking objects down to the two-dollar level, which is what I often pay for a used book, is not to scale and probably not helpful. So I would encourage you to vote to remove that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Without objection, I would like to move council paper twelve thousand three twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter Z to the beginning of the meeting. Does anyone have an objection? Council paper twelve thousand three twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Chapter Z by adding a new section nine point five entitled Hospital Avenue Overlay District by adding new Hospital Avenue Overlay District under Section two point one Overlay Zoning District by adding new footnote six to Appendix B of Chapter Z and to amend zoning map dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one to include the Hospital Overlay District, was sent to a planning board for a joint meeting to be held last night, Monday, the thirteenth, with a return date of today, the fourteenth. We, it was referred to Planning Board, we had our meeting, it was voted at the Planning Board to recommend to the full council that we adopt this, and there was a letter forwarded to everybody. I'm not sure if people got it with their schedule. I was just gonna grab it and read it. November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Ms. Lisa Blackmore, President, North Adams City Council, North Adams, Mass. RE amending North Adams Chapter Z by adding a new section nine point five Hospital Avenue Overlay District. Dear President Blackmore, please be advised that the North Adams Planning Board during its joint meeting with the City Council on November thirteenth voted to refer to the North Adams City Council to adopt the amendments to Chapter Z by adding new section nine point five Hospital Ave Overlay District by adding new Hospital Avenue Overlay District under Section two point one Overlay Zoning District by adding new footnote six point, footnote six to Appendix B of Chapter Z, EIEIO, and to amend zoning map dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one to include the Hospital Overlay District. Sincerely, Brian Mixick, Chairman of the North Adams Planning Board. So, um, we have, we need a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by the law?
Motion to pass to a second reading and publish.
Is it, is it big enough for a municipal bulletin or no? Let's see.
Let's make it so.
It is not, really, but.
A lot of periods at the end of the sentence.
Less spaces. Three, four, five, no. Okay, that's gonna. Not according to our. Okay, so, do we have a discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Leskowitz.
This proposal is really important for us getting a somewhat functional hospital again, which is a great thing, and I want to thank BMCA for being willing to do that and get us functioning rooms again. I know I have family and a lot of members of the community, and it's really hard, especially with transportation in the Berkshires, to send people all the way to Pittsfield for services and then to be able to help our patients. So it's a great thing for the city to have a more functioning hospital. I do have one question through the chair to both the Planning Board member here, or to our building inspector, and to the representative from Berkshire Medical Center. Last night, there was a question around whether or not, if new structures were built on the property, whether or not they would require a site plan, and I just want to make sure that that's clarified this evening. My understanding after talking to the building inspector that anything over a certain size, which I believe was two hundred and fifty feet, does require a site plan, and I want to make sure that everybody's in agreement on that, that that is the case. So if we can just get clarification from both a representative from Berkshire Medical Center and from the building inspector?
Do I have to go in?
Please?
I think that we do have agreement on that. The ordinance still reads that anything new construction, two hundred square feet or larger, would require a site plan, just like any other zone in the city. I think we're in agreement.
Agreeable, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's publicly agreeable. It was a question last night that was somewhat ambiguous, so thank you so much for answering that. With that said, I fully support this, and I look forward to seeing more services at our hospital again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Harpen?
Yes, I also would just like to thank the administration at the hospital for bringing the beds back to North Adams. This is really important to our community. We do have a community that is highly vulnerable and has a difficult time with transportation, whether because of their age, or because of their handicap status, or, you know, their social status. So it's a long way to travel from North Adams to Pittsfield, and so to have beds here is really gonna make a difference in our community, and I just really thank you. I know it was a lot of work, a lot of legwork, a lot of talking to representatives in the state, and I just really appreciate all your efforts and work to bring this to actually northern Berkshire, not just North Adams. So thank you.
Anyone else? Again, I want to congratulate slash thank you for the work you've done on to be, bring this to us. I had the misfortune to be the city council president when the hospital closed, so I am first in line to see, to be happy to see it open. And again, as everybody said, we have a population that traveling to Pittsfield can be a real hardship, so it's really important for us to have this here and the other services that you're bringing in with it. We have a motion and a second. Any more questions, comments, conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're gonna be busy tomorrow morning. Just gotta get it all published by Saturday. It was Counselor Leskowitz and Counselor Wilkinson. Moving back to the agenda, I think. Okay, back to the regular agenda.
Just, they are.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure, the motion was to, also, it was the second reading and adoption?
No, passed to a second reading and published by, as required by law. It will then be up for adoption at our next meeting, as long as we can get it published, because there's that holiday in there, so.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll see what we can, again, and if it's not gonna happen, we'll have somebody let you know. So the plan would be to vote, hopefully vote it on this second meeting in November. We will make every effort to make sure that it gets published. Yeah. Okay, we already voted, but what?
No, I just want to let the people here that are here for this, let them know, unless you want to say, as they say, "See us make the sausage, you're welcome to go."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Question was answered, we're good.
Just give them a second. Okay, I'm just worried about the holiday on Thursday, because you can't count that day. Okay, everybody all set? We can move on. Council paper eleven thousand two, I'm sorry, eleven thousand eight twenty-six, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the North Adams City, City of North Adams regarding various fees established in the city code postponed from the meeting of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a return date of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we postpone it to the next meeting and also refer back to the Finance Committee. Two reasons. One, the city solicitor has not got back with their opinion yet. The mayor informed me tonight that they've been away, so they have not had a chance to either finish reviewing or reviewing what we sent them. But also, I'd like to refer back to the Finance Committee, because I know the city clerk actually has some amendments she would like to make to their portion, and we can work on those amendments prior, so that when it comes back from the city solicitor, we can have some written amendments already ready at that time. So that sort of killed two birds with one stone.
Or we could shoot them if we, if we meet before we get it back, we could also.
We could. I think it's just some, some number changes on some of their current things that she didn't have an opportunity to see before. So, anyway, so I would, excuse me, through the chair, Mayor, did they give you impression maybe to, oh, you said first meeting in December, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, sorry, first meeting.
Yeah, December twelfth.
Okay, so first meeting in December.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council paper twelve thousand one ninety-one, a communication from Counselor Shade requesting the local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage postponed from the meeting of September twenty-sixth, with a return date of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This was originally referred to Public Safety and the Board of Health. Since that time, it's come back to the council. Do we have an update or slash a motion?
Public Safety, I believe, should have.
Okay, since the last time this came before the council, we, I think we had our meeting, but we've already updated. I don't think there are any new updates. The only difference, we were gonna make proposal to put a ban on feeding, the feeding of wildlife, we were gonna propose an ordinance on that, and we were going to seek a solicitor's opinion on whether or not we can use tax liens to enforce the fines and to enable us to have a little bit more leverage in trying to clean up some of these derelict properties that were out there and people that are persistent offenders of trash and junking up, basically junking up their yards and not complying with numerous requests by the Board of Health or the Health Department to clean up their properties. So that's where that stands right now.
So do we have a motion?
I would like to propose to, or make a, make a motion to postpone this to the first meeting of December.
Could we also have that, when it comes back to us, that we actually have ordinance language and that it be on the agenda with the communication and the ordinance language?
I can make that happen.
Thank you.
Second.
Any more discussion? Counselor Shade and then Mayor.
Yes. With that said, and I think the ordinance is a good step as far as wildlife, I think that will definitely help. Originally, when I filed this communication and looking at the laws, when it comes to trash and removal, because the city itself isn't the trash service, we don't collect, you know, collection is privatized, there's not so much control we have over bins and different things like that, but a lot of that can be regulated by the Board of Health itself. So if you are noticing people leaving rubbish out and it interfering in the community, please contact the Board of Health and let them know, because if they're not informed, they can't do anything about it. So it's really important just to be notifying them and keep them in the loop when you notice there's large collections of trash that isn't being dealt with and it's becoming a safety hazard and creating operating ground for rodents and different things like that. It is very important to inform the Department of Health that that is going on, otherwise there's really nothing anybody can do about that. So just wanted to remind everyone of that with this season, now this is the season where all the rodents come out, they try to get into the homes, they cover your stuff up as best as possible, try to clear out your rubbish, try not to let it pile up, but if you notice that things are getting piled up in your communities and things aren't being taken care of, please notify someone. Don't just wait and expect it to just go away, that won't work. So, thank you.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, the plan is also to look at the existing literal ordinance and seeing if there's any places that we can tighten that up at all, so that's part of the plan as well.
Thank you. Mayor?
So internally, we've been working on some policies around, as a former tax collector, you'd understand this, a lean and clean model. There's several pros and cons, but we are looking at different procedures around that, and that could be written in as part of that. We're not ready to really execute that, because there's pros and cons. If you start hauling people's trash away, then they expect that, and that's not our business, but we are very concerned about the amount of debris that's out there and not really having a mechanism to fix it for the neighbors and then recoup our expenses. So that's something that we're working on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council paper twelve thousand two eighteen, an order amending Chapter twenty-three, the taxi ordinance by post, it was postponed from the meeting of October tenth with a return date of November fourteenth. We have an updated ordinance language. Do we have a motion?
A motion to, a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as a municipal bulletin.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Wilkinson. Discussion?
Okay, so there were a couple of language clarifications that were made in this ordinance, and to clear that up, it specifies strictly that the type of offense that cab drivers would be liable for would be strictly moving violations or violations of that particular ordinance. It wouldn't include parking violations or anything of the such, strictly moving violations. It also gives drivers three chances to, before their license are actually suspended. We postpone, or we limited the cap on the length of suspension for cab drivers. Pardon me while I look up the language here. Okay, so basically what it does is it specifies that if you have three or more violations, your license will be suspended. If the police department or the police chief or his alternate, designated alternate feels that the violation is serious enough, the suspension would be immediate. And basically, the appeals process for operators does, does allow that suspensions or revocations, and the appeals process for taxi drivers is for revocations, as a suspension is there to, in mind, to keep public safety in mind. So if a driver does commit the three violations, their license will be suspended for a period up to ten days, and that is where we stand.
Is there anything in here, or is it, it's pretty much understood? If their license to operate, to drive a car, not including a taxi license, is suspended, then they are automatically, their taxi license is suspended, because you have to have a valid license to drive a cab, correct?
That is covered under Section, I believe that's covered under Section twenty-three Bear with me for just a moment.
My page is stuck together.
It was covered under the requirements for cab drivers.
Okay, so it's kind of, it makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. And there is no appeals process if, until the registry gives them their license back?
Right, exactly.
Thank you. My page is stuck together. Any conversations, questions? We have a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as a municipal bulletin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council paper twelve thousand three zero five, an ordinance amending Chapter one, general provisions, Section five, recrudation of ordinances, passed to a second reading and published as required by law was, okay, it didn't get published, is that it? That's the one that was not. Okay, this did not get published, so we are going, a motion to postpone till the meeting of? The twenty-eighth. The twenty-eighth.
Point of clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Since we just passed an item about publishing for the hospital, now we have the taxi, and we have this, would that mean all of those things need to be in the paper, or can they all be put together as a bulletin, since they are all being?
Bulletin is specific to the individual ordinance, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I've asked that question before. The other thing is, has this, did we publish it afterwards, so we don't have to worry about, or has this not been published at all? Okay, thank you for that question. Okay. I'll put that one in tomorrow with the other one for the hospital and the posting for.
Motion to postpone till the next meeting?
Second.
Counselor Shade, Counselor Sapienza, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council paper twelve thousand three zero six, an ordinance to amend Chapter ten, junk and secondhand dealers. Article one, Section ten dash three, purchase, record of purchase and sales, inspection of books, shopkeeper to display name, ten dash four, dealing with minors prohibited, ten dash five, business hours, postponed from the meeting of October twenty-fourth to the meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to postpone to the first meeting of December?
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
This is when we're still waiting for solicitor opinion on certain parts as well?
Okay, thank you. I was like, why? We have a motion, do we have a second? I'm sorry, Counselor Obasahan, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's gonna be a long night on the twelfth. Council paper twelve thousand three thirteen, an amendment to City Council Rule Number seven, order of business referred to General Government at the meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a return date of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Counselor Wilkinson, do you have a motion?
I do. I don't know why this is here. At the last meeting, we tabled it, so why this came back, I have no idea. This has already been tabled and should not have been on the agenda. I suggest we just move on.
So you're gonna motion to table it?
We already did that at the last meeting.
Well, let's do it again, since it's on the agenda.
Move to table.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Leskowitz or Bona?
Point of clarification? Should it be a motion to file?
Fine with me.
Either one.
Okay, just, because we tabled last time, it didn't work, so.
Yes.
All right, all right. I would like to change my, my motion to rule to file.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good point.
Council paper twelve thousand three twenty-two, we already did. Council paper twelve thousand three twenty-four, Mayor's Communication Number ninety-seven, appointing Beverly Cooper to serve as a member of the retirement board for a term to expire November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
To approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council paper twelve thousand three twenty-five, Mayor's Communication Number ninety-eight, requesting time to prepare, present a proclamation in support of Transgender Day of Remembrance. Without objection, I will file the communication. Mayor?
Good evening, councilors. I'd like to declare November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three as transgender Day of Remembrance, whereas all persons deserve to live in the city that respects their dignity, safety, and overall well-being by supporting equality and fair treatment of everyone, and whereas every day transgender persons bear the brunt of social and economic marginalization due to discrimination based on their gender, identity, or expression, and whereas transgender persons continue to face high levels of discrimination, stigma, and bias that can feel abuse and violence against this community, and whereas our entire community is diminished when we lose the talents and contributions of any member of our community prematurely, whether due to direct anti-transgender violence or due to suicide or other health effects resulting from the trauma or discrimination, and whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance helps bring public awareness to anti-transgender hate crimes and honors the members of those hurt and killed by acts of anti-transgender violence each year. Now therefore, I, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do hereby proclaim November twentieth as Transgender Day of Remembrance, and call upon our residents to acknowledge the lives lost to violence against transgender persons, and to acknowledge the work of activists, advocates, and allies working to secure equal rights and affirm the freedom of all people to live openly, honestly, and safely. Thank you.
Council paper twelve thousand three twenty-six, Mayor's Communication Number ninety-nine, requesting, what did I miss? Oh, okay, I thought I missed. No, don't, don't fall. Mayor's Communication Number ninety-nine, requesting a public tax classification hearing be set by the council for Tuesday, November twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM without. November 28, 2023, at 7:00 PM without, so we will set the hearing for November 28, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Without objection, I'll file the mayor's communication. You have both the memo from the mayor and the memo from Ms. Lindcourt from the Board of Assessors. And we will have all the information ahead of time, correct? Obviously, I know that, but just, we could have it so we have time to digest it over the weekend at least. So make sure you put that on your schedule. Council Paper 12,327, Mayor's Communication Number 100, Appointing Miranda Smith-Hunt to Serve as a Member of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access, IDEA, Commission for a Term to Expire February 8, 2024, Filling the Unexpired Term of Linda Santy.
Move to a point.
Second.
Council Shade, Council Aluskowitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper 12,328, a communication from City Clerk Leonazio regarding immediate revocation of Keith Menory's taxi license to drive for RJ's Taxi Material. We've got, without objection, I'll file the communication. We have been notified by the Police Department that the Motor, Registry of Motor Vehicles has revoked his, suspended, I'm sorry, immediately.
Speak up a little, please.
I'm sorry. We've been notified by the police, the clerk was notified by the Police Department that he was, his license was suspended by the registry, so therefore he is ineligible to drive a taxi cab. And that he's received a letter. So I don't think we have to vote on it. I think it's self-explanatory.
It was just a communication.
He will have to reapply for a new taxi license?
Once, once he, his license is reinstated for the minimum amount of time, then he can reapply.
Okay. Thank you for that, and thank you for communicating that us, that with us.
I just have a question. Is that one year after you get your, your license returned to you that you can get out?
I believe it was two years.
Is it two years?
I believe it was two years.
I knew it was a late, quite a lengthy amount of time.
Yeah, I believe it's two years, yep.
Anything else? Okay, let's, on open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Please leave your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Wilson and I live at St. Joe's Corps on Eagle Street. I got a question for you. With the trash around there, I'm glad you getting on people, you know, you know, everybody's worried about the COVID virus, but that trash around, around people's houses, that can cause the diseases. But the question I want to know is, I know it's check and balance, what if some elderly can't do it? Is there any way that they can get help from the city or somebody or the health board? Because, you know, sometimes people get sick and they can't always pick up their own trash. Is there anybody helping them do that? I know elderly can do so much. I just wonder about that. Anybody thought about that? Because it's so important that check and balance like that, because I'm very concerned because when I get sick, I, it's hard for me to do certain things, especially when your zaddy is acting up. So I hope people are thinking about that. Thank you very much.
Andrew Fitch, 20 East Quincy Street. I'm a representative from North Adams Pride. First of all, Mayor Maxey, thank you for reading that proclamation and delivering that for Trans Day of Remembrance. Ashley Shade, thank you for being here and thank you for receiving it. A quick announcement of an event that's coming up on that day. North Adams Pride is partnering with the Bar &amp; Beat Bookstore, as well as Councilor Shade, to produce an event that memorializes and honors those whose lives have been lost on that day. So 5:30 PM to 7 o'clock PM, starting at Bar &amp; Beat Bookstore, that's Monday, the 20th of this month, and then we'll walk to hold candles together, battery-operated candles for the most part, in front of City Hall and read the names of those who have been lost. So feel free to join us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor's Updates.
Okay, I got a whole list tonight. So I know a couple of you have asked me about the Brown Street Bridge. So Mass DOT and the city are working with the Army Corps to get more information about how we can approach this. We are working towards a temporary fix, but no set plan has been determined for the temporary fix or reopening anytime soon. So more to follow on that, but we are, the three teams are working together to hopefully come up with a solution. We've received several calls just this week about the State Road West End Package Bridge, or soon to be called the Billy Evans Bridge. Mobilization is underway, and once they start, it's our understanding that they will do one lane at a time with possible closures at night. So we're trying to coordinate that bridge project with what's going on on Mass Ave and not having the Brown Street Bridge. So just, everybody's concerned that they aren't going to be able to get through the downtown any easy way, but I am assured that there will be a nice traffic pattern through there at some, throughout the construction. That project will be a very long project, so just everyone needs to be patient with that. The Mass Ave project, again, we ask for everyone's patience. It's taking us a little bit longer than we had anticipated. We are hoping over the next three weeks to a month that we can open the roadway after 4:00 PM on weekends. It's been a pet peeve of mine that the road is closed and no one's working. Right now, we have the road exposed and open, so we can't have traffic go through there, but we're hoping that work will be done in the next three weeks, four weeks. So at least after the construction workers go home, we'll be able to open that road all the way through Mass Ave to Williamstown at night and on the weekend. Again, the project is taking longer, but we anticipate once we get there, the flooding and some of the water remediation will be much better in that area. Demos. We've bid for the third time a demo project, so I'm pleased to announce that we've awarded a contract to Associated Building Records to demolish Houghton Street and a property on Prospect Street. Both sites are considered high with asbestos abatements, so therefore the areas will be completely contained. So don't get nervous when you see a lot of people with zoot suits on. We, because of the conditions of the building, we had to declare it all hazardous. It doesn't necessarily mean that it is, but we couldn't get into the buildings because they're in such poor condition to do an adequate assessment. So that work will be underway in the next 30 days. So I know especially the people in, on the Houghton Street area will be happy about that. On Saturday, I don't remember the date, this coming Saturday, at 9:30, the veterans will be removing the flags from the cemetery. Everyone's encouraged to come out and help. It's a lengthy process. So if you would like to help our veterans, please feel free to join us at Southview Cemetery. And then on Wednesday, November 22nd, I can't believe we're talking about this already, at 5:30, we will have our tree lighting in the downtown. So I hope to see everyone there, and I'd like to wish the council and all of our citizens a very happy Thanksgiving, and I'm grateful for all of you in different ways. So thank you.
Thank you. Community reports in minutes. Liaison updates and councilors' concerns. Councilor Sapienza?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. In your rough guesstimation, how far are we through the project on Mass Avenue roughly percentage-wise?
Probably at about 75%. We were hoping we were going to have it done by December, but we're going to run into the spring. We'll close out by June 30th, but most of the work that will require us to close the street will be done hopefully by the end of the year. And then depending on what kind of winter we get, we'll determine how much work we get done between January and the spring. So we're planning on closing that out in June, but that doesn't necessarily mean construction will go till June.
Thank you.
Council Wilkinson?
Yeah, through the, through the chair, the mayor. Before the next meeting, could we put batteries in the clock?
Already been addressed.
It's still, still not working?
It's on Mr. Moranti's list.
Okay, thank you.
Council Sapienza?
I can take care of that one easy. Do you want me to climb up there and do that?
I don't think either one of us is tall enough to get close to it.
I can pick you.
You know you can.
Okay, go ahead, Council Sapienza.
Okay, this addresses Mr. Wilson's concerns about elderly and disabled people being able to remove the trash. That has been discussed. So we have, that is being thought of and that is being discussed. Thank you.
I would like to congratulate our clerk, our assistant clerk, all of the board of registrars, all of the election workers on a job well done on Election Day. I know we changed it, we moved the hours back, added more work for them. I was number 13 at quarter after seven, so that wasn't too bad. So I just want to thank them for that. It's their first election as a team, and they did pass with flying colors. And I know it's not easy. We had all the early voting, and we had the Saturday voting, and the mail-in voting, and the, you name it, voting, which is great for the populace to be able to vote, but it adds a lot of work on to our staff. So I really want to show my appreciation for the work that they did on that. And I think that's it. Council Sapienza?
Yeah, just one quick thing. I want to thank the, my fellow members of the Public Safety Committee on putting together this taxi ordinance. It was a lot of hard work, and I want to thank Council Harpen and Council Abasahon for their efforts in assisting and getting an ordinance that we can work with. Thank you.
Council Bona?
Through the chair to the mayor, do, I've heard rumor the Mohawk Marquee could be soon?
Soon. We were hoping to have it ready to light for the tree lighting. The biggest delay has been matching the colors to what we consider original. So we were hoping for next week, but it's not going to happen. But I'm hoping mid-December. Hoping. There are so many different shades of red and orange and off-white. I, it has a special name, which I still don't get, but we're, it will be beautiful when it comes back.
And what people remember and what they actually were are two different things. We ran into that when we did the neon back in 99, 98. And yeah, what people think it was and what it actually was. So when you say historical, you kind of have to tweak it.
It's been tweaked.
It's been really tweaked. Anything else? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move. Second?
Council Wilkinson, Council Sapienza, all in favor?
Aye.